Information or documentation county council may have, but I did bring a map that generally depicts the property in question.
I'm sorry if we didn't get the map, please.
I've also attached to it a somewhat lengthy petition that has been signed by a great number of area property owners.
Okay.
Who are also in favor of the requested rezoning.
Okay.
It just had been very general review, you'll see that there is a small parcel on toward the bottom right-hand side of the map that is actually .7 acres of land.
Mm-hmm.
That is zoned as part of the C district. Everything around it and across the street is zoned as part of the business district. In fact, Mr. Beluski owns the distributorship next door, as well as several other properties. The old Pinecone Restaurant is here, there's a Nino's Pizza across the street, again, a great number of businesses in the area.
Mm-hmm.
When we appeared in front of the planning commission, it seemed to be the consensus of those within the office of the planning commission that this was probably an oversight, that it was zone conservation to begin with, that it would more appropriately be zoned as part of a business zoning district, considering its surroundings. This is, this is a little tiny island of conservation, completely surrounded by business.
Mm-hmm.
I do not want to belabor council's time, but we are more than happy to answer any questions or provide any more detail if you feel it's necessary.
Well, you know, we did send out information for council to review prior to tonight's meeting. We didn't have a map like this, I don't believe, but I think they have all the other information pretty much.
Yeah, there are also, like, in the planning commission's file, there's a photograph of all of these different businesses too, and I was gonna ask and perhaps show that to all the council members, but.
I think this map depicts it pretty well.
Okay. Is there anything else we can?
Anything, any questions for Mr. McNeilus? Thank you.
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Eddy, do we, do you have any comments in this regard?
Good evening. He's Eddie, planning director. I think at the last meeting you, whatever questions you had, I think Jim Weber was pretty succinct in advert, in addressing whatever concerns, questions you may have had. I don't think really have anything additional to add.
Okay.
Mr. McNeilus is actually, we think, fairly on target.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Eddy or Mr. McNeilus? Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in this regard, in the rezoning? Anyone else in the audience? Counsel? Any questions? Motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Kellert? Ms. Saven, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The opposition, the abstentions and unheard, motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll be coming up on our voting session at 6:01, so we have about five minutes until we reset the timeframe. And in the voting session, we do have that under our voting session this evening, under number one, under the county council. You always stay for a couple of minutes. We'll be dealing with that shortly. Okay? Sure. Okay, we got it. That's the work session. That's good, we're in favor of that, so sort of using it.
What's going on?
Not much. How are you? I know.
Mr. Eddy?
For Cunningham Borough.
What?
I don't know, it's Tuesday night, I think. We might interfere with the sweep-up Monday.
They meet on Mondays, huh?
Yeah.
The board? Okay. McNeilus, is he from down in the white room?
That's a different McNeilus.
Okay.
Ned is.
He's a bigger guy. He's married to Florrie, right?
Yeah.
Florrie worked for Pekin Hill, we did work with her.
Yeah, for years.
When I, when I worked at CEO, he used to do a Pekin Hill program, so I knew Florrie pretty well back then.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're gonna begin the meeting by the pledge of the flag, please.
Pledge of the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
On the silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kellher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Ms. Wakis?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ms. Adams?
Go ahead.
Prior to the meeting this evening, council convened an executive session where we discuss the status of various collective bargaining agreements and personnel issues.
Thank you. There are no recognitions or ceremonial proclamations this evening. Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda, please? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Wakis, second. Ms. Saven, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions and unheard, motion carries. Any speakers who would like to speak prior to the agenda? Any speakers who would like to address items in the agenda? No one? Thank you. First item, business motion to approve the minutes from the February 26 meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kellher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, on the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions and unheard, motion carries. Moving on to page two. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Luzern County zoning map to rezone 7/10 acre parcel of property in Union Township from the construction district, C1 zone, to a highway business district, B3 zone. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wakis and Mr. Snee, on the question? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to approve the letter of support for the friends of Camp Louise.
So moved.
Mr. Kellher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to approve the letter of support for the friends of Camp Louise.
So moved.
Mr. Kellher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to approve the letter of support for the friends of Camp Louise.
So moved.
Mr. Kellher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Motion carries. And number three, a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy in Luzern County Transportation Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kellher and Mr. Snee? This vacancy would be as a result of a resignation. On the motion, any question?
Just a brief comment.
Yes, sir.
Chair. It's nice to see a person who doesn't stay in an office just to have a title. This gentleman, his work caused a problem for, for him being able to attend meetings, and he has a letter that's public information, and I appreciate his honesty.
Thank you. Ms. Howe?
Can I ask what the remaining length of the term is?
Well, he was appointed last year, January of last year, so it's a five-year term. Probably has almost four years, maybe three years and nine months.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to approve the letter of support for the friends of Camp Louise.
So moved.
Mr. Kellher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Motion carries. And number three, a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy in Luzern County Transportation Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kellher and Mr. Snee? This vacancy would be as a result of a resignation. On the motion, any question?
Just a brief comment.
Yes, sir.
From the chair. It's nice to see a person who doesn't stay in an office just to have a title. This gentleman, his work caused a problem for, for him being able to attend meetings, and he has a letter that's public information, and I appreciate his honesty.
Thank you. Ms. Howe?
Can I ask what the remaining length of the term is?
Well, he was appointed last year, January of last year, so it's a five-year term. Probably has almost four years, maybe three years and nine months.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Any public comment in any regards to anything that someone would like to address from the public speaking? Anyone from the public who would like to address council at this time? Mr. Bo?
Good evening. Feels different being up here. Kind of like it. I just wanted to talk a little bit about an issue that's been getting close to home with me. So, as one of the young people serving on council, and it seems like consistently reading about overdose deaths in the ma, in the newspaper, and having known some of them who have passed, I've been trying to figure out what I can do personally to help. So I've been meeting with various people from across the county, trying to educate myself on, one, what needs to be done, and, two, what can I, as a councilman, personally do. A lot of people assume that it's a funding issue, but the federal government has been great, sending money down to us, and the drug and alcohol program and task force have been really working hard to educate those who suffer from these illnesses. And what I want, personally want to do is help educate the public on what these guys are doing, because a lot of it goes unnoticed, ultimately in the hopes of saving some lives. So, first, one amazing addition to Luzern County is the Drug Recovery Support Center, which will open next month, right down the street. The facility is designed to prevent those who have stopped using drugs from relapsing, which is a huge, huge issue. Places like this recovery center are a key to educating and helping those who struggle with addiction on a daily basis. So, once a month, I'm gonna be up here, talking about the good things that we are doing in Luzern County, and in hopes that we can fight this issue a little bit better. I think a lot of it is education, and I want to help pass that education along to the, the citizens of Luzern Ca, Luzern County. So, I'll be visiting various centers and agencies across the county to get firsthand accounts of the positive things that we are doing. I want to shed light on the lives that we've saved, continue to fight for the ones that are suffering. So, once a month, I'll be up here talking about that, and then on my Facebook and Instagram pages, I'll also be sharing some positive outlooks that we, that we find throughout the county. And just a little side note, for those who are struggling, I'm here for you, the life, I can be a lifeline for you. Email, call me, I can help you in any way. I'll personally get you the help that you need, and I just want to help save as many lives as possible, so that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just briefly, a comment. We have a group that you know, you've spoken there, at Irem, and it's called the Back Mountain Men's Ecumenical Group. Our speaker this past week, who's one of the best speakers I've ever heard in my life, is a guy named Carmen Ambrosino. And there's a gentleman who, he said, "My, my calling in life has been to help people have addictions." And he spoke eloquently, and is very, one of the most knowledgeable, knowledgeable people in the field I've ever heard. And you bring this up today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen to the chair.
So moved.
Mr. Snee? Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Okay, we're gonna move into the work session, and after we get through several items, we're gonna take a, a break in order for the controller to have time to set up to do her report this evening. So we'll start with the voting session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kellher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Ms. Wakis?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
All present. We have a motion to adopt the work session agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Wakis? Ms. Saven, second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Okay, we're gonna move into the work session, and after we get through several items, we're gonna take a, a break in order for the controller to have time to set up to do her report this evening. So we'll start with the voting session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kellher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Snee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Bo?
Here.
Ms. Wakis?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
All present.
All present. We have a motion to adopt the work session agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Wakis? Ms. Saven, second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions unheard? Motion carries. County manager, Petrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, it's been a busy month, as conceding my division head summary of February 2019. I'll highlight a couple of points for, for county council for review, and obviously, if there is anything else we'd like to follow up after that, I'd be happy to take your questions. The first area that I want to hit is our GIS mapping department. The department uploaded select GIS data sets to our census bureau in an effort to maintain data integrity with the federal government. We have to start sounding this call right now. The 2020 census will soon be upon us. My office has started reviewing the, the census information from the federal government. We're gonna be reaching, reaching out to municipalities to coordinate our response, to get the word out there. Obviously, as everybody in this room knows, if our census is not correctly done, that directly affects our federal and state funding for every aspects of what we do here at the county and at our, and at the government, local government level. If you could get the word out to every municipality right now, we should be preparing for the census, getting ready for the census, and making sure that our citizens have all the information at their, at their, at their quick review in order to move forward with our, with our census in 2020. Second item that I want to address is our budget and finance department. We are, we did, we completed our hard close for the 2018 fiscal year budget. That was done on February 15th. We finalized our invoices, transfers, and journal entries for March 1st, 2019, for March 1st, 2019. The reason why I'm telling you this is because it leads right into our 2018 audit update. Tonight, downstairs, we are being visited by members of Clifton, Larson, Allen. They are starting their week-long process to start to review our 2018 books. They will be here for the rest of this week, and weekly updates will be provided to our audit committee going forward into audit completion. Obviously, as I stated here numerous times, the goal of our administration will be an on-time, unqualified audit for 2019. Another area that I would like to draw council's attention to is our roads. There is over 128 miles of roads in Luzern County, and we are starting a giant project in May, and we are going to be doing a full-dep reclamation from Foothills Drive all the way, on 309, all the way over to 93. We have tentative agreements that we hope to bring in front of county council in the next few weeks with Butler Township, Cunningham Borough, and Sugarloaf Township. Upon completion of those, of those roads, those roads will be turned over to those municipalities so that they can start collecting the liquid fuels and taking care of those roads moving forward. It's a win-win for both sides, and we appreciate the municipalities working with us. With that being said, there's still an incredible amount of work to do on the rest of the roads. Wayne Mitchell, who was here tonight and his crew, put 12 tons of coal patch down on Hillside Road over the weekend. Today, they put 10 tons down on Foothills Drive in Butler Township. Tomorrow, they're going out to Follies Road. Our road and bridge crew does a phenomenal job, they work extremely hard. We need to have more people working on our road and bridge crew. Once again, I put the word out to the, to the public, if you are interested in a road and bridge job at Luzern County, we have numerous openings available, and we would love to see your application in order to have that. One area, the final area that I'd like to draw attention to is a protheronetary clerk of courts, and specifically, record storage. If you've been upstairs, county council allocated funds in order to move our protheronetary and our clerk of courts into one room, into former protheronitaries' room. That construction is almost complete, it will be completed in about three weeks. This will enable the clerk of courts and the protheronitary to be in the same room, one location, one space for customer service where anybody can go for filing, no more, I don't know where this goes, or anything along those lines. It also helps our work staff, because I could truly cross-train every single person who works in the protheronitary and clerk of courts to work in both offices, making it a very, much more efficient office moving forward. And I want to commend Joan Holgarth and Jim Haddock for their hard work in getting this across the line. Final thing that I want to bring up is, as you can see from our records retention building, they were extremely busy. Butch over in the records, in the records retention building, received over 52 boxes of adoption files, 50 boxes of estate files. We purged 40 boxes of conflict council records. We had 18 walk-in customers, set up 17 new shelves. That records retention building, that's the, the investment that this council has made into that location is already starting to pay dividends. This beautiful climate-controlled building that will be there for generations clearly will keep the records of Luzern County and keep the story of Luzern County going. You see how quickly we use it, how quickly we fill it, purge it, continue to keep this process moving forward. So I appreciate council support on our records retention building, and Butch Kovalesky from our records retention department needs to be recognized for his hard work. With that being said, I'd be opening myself up to questions this time.
Questions?
The project actually has begun on Blitheburn Road Bridge. By golly, it began in February, and according to your notes, it's going to be completed by the end of May. And on behalf of the people of Mountain Top, thank you for that. My other bridge, then it's more of a question, the one, this is in Hollandback Township, Bridge Road, and it looks like construction has begun, but I don't see a timeline. I know it's a much longer, it's going to be a much bigger project because I'm thinking, I don't know if anyone's here who knows how long the project actually is.
Hey, do you have, do you have no timeline on that one? Could I get back to you?
I don't have a timeline, but I will give you that information, please. On a design basis.
I, I really appreciate that. If you could send us an email about that. And, and a rough estimate about total time, I'm getting questions from the folks in Hollandback about, first of all, thank you, they're very excited because the bridge is going to be replaced. They're just, a general idea of timeline.
Absolutely. How about to your first name and last?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Hauck?
Yes, I'd appreciate an update on the children and youth money, the 2.5 million and the 5.6 million.
The two point, the 5.6 million dollars is referred to Baker Tilly for their review. They've been reviewing documents from 2011. We have a conference call with them on Monday for an update. They have been, they've been telling us they've been making continual progress on that. A big part of our 2018 audit will be that. So we're hoping to have that number in by the end of this month, the end of March. For the 2.3 that I was working on for, for children and youth, we've assigned Chris De Lissandro and Adam Wormwitz from the Human Services Division in order to review those numbers. They have been making progress on those numbers as well. They have, obviously, they've provided their trial bounds to their auditors as well as Zokowski and Axelrod, and we'll have an answer on that 2.3 million dollars in May.
Just one more question. The controller's going to be here tonight, and I, I hope that the controller has taken interest in these two issues, and maybe she can shed some light on it from an independent standpoint about what's going on with this money that is reportedly missing as a result of these audits. So I hope she's following this, and I hope she's doing something about it, and I'll be looking forward to hearing from her if she has any information on these two topics.
A little bit later in the work session, we will have a report. Anyone else?
Yeah, and.
Mr. Hauss first? No, Mr. Hauss first.
That's right. Yeah, Ms. Bridge, thanks for the road update regarding Chase Road. I'm seeing here, it looks like we're still on target for April to.
God, I hope so, Harry. Chase Road just keeps going.
Now, that one, we're going to mill that, that's going to be some, some real deep canyon there.
Well, it's a full depth reclamation. Full depth reclamation, all the way down to the bottom, all the way back up.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a complete reclamation in that road.
Very good. I still get a few of those every month, just want to clarify to send the word out to them so people.
Chase Road is still, is still working with us. We're working with PennDOT on that. American Asphalt was provided with that contract. If this weather holds out, I mean, we've had now exactly one day of sunshine, I believe, in the last, in the last 90 days, so it's got to end at some point, as would be my two cents. So we're hoping for a nice dry spring to get some of these projects done.
I'm glad to see American Asphalt, it's a little bitter, they got a short commute there to fix that road, so hopefully they'll.
And I think they have, and I think they want, they have a vested interest to make sure it's done.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Wiegas?
Yeah, I forgot to also say thank you to the road and bridge department again for all of their hard work. I know they're really working without a full crew, and I know, I think they're doing amazing work with all the cold application they're putting on the road, so thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll touch base with Ms. Wiegas, said a tremendous job by our road and crew, and as Mr. Pedri stands drastically undermanned, so to those guys that have been making up for bodies that haven't been there, I thank you on behalf of the citizens.
And to Mr. O'Neill, too, who heads it up, so thank you, sir. Back where we are at.
Okay. Moving down. Attorney Hagan, you're next.
My name is Frank Hagan. I'm an attorney in Wilkes-Barre, and I represent the developers at 600 Riverfront Plaza. I handed, or I shared some materials, I think they're in.
Everyone has that.
Everyone, so you have, if you thumb through it in advance of my presentation, you've had a chance to see what the elevations look like from the front and rear of this proposed townhouse, I'm sorry, not townhouse, but apartment complex. The first floor is going to be retail. If you look through the pictures, there's actually going to be some underground parking and surface parking as well on the outside of the building. We are in really phase one of this process. As you may be familiar with the LERTA process, there's a two-step process. The first is to ask permission from the various taxing authorities for the ability to conduct a public meeting, at which point, members of the public, the taxing authorities, and any and all other individuals who have an interest are invited to come. A presentation will be made to those in attendance to demonstrate the qualifications of the site for the LERTA designation. At that point, if the LERTA designation is accomplished, then we'll be back in front of the various taxing authorities, asking specifically for LERTA designation for the full 10 years. So tonight's request is very narrow and limited. I'm simply asking that we have your permission to proceed with the public hearing. Just, you may have read it in the newspaper, but I'll reiterate it. We have been before Wilkes-Barre Area School District, we've been before Plains Township, both of whom have endorsed the project and have authorized us to proceed with the public meeting. So you are the last of the three to vote, and I would ask that council take the matter under advisement and advise me if we can move forward with the public meeting.
Okay. Questions for Attorney Hagan?
I just have a question. I know you said, Mr. Hagan, first of all, welcome to council again.
Thank you.
Good to see you. You said at that time of the hearing, you're going to promote whatever LERTA, whatever you're asking from the LERTA program at that time?
LERTA designation.
So once we get past the public meeting, assuming we get your permission, we'll be back in front of you with a presentation to disclose the financials that are associated with the benefit of LERTA if you were to give us that approval.
So we're just, obviously, moving it forward to just the hearing.
Just valley, all Attorney Hagan's requesting is a public hearing.
That's correct.
And the other two taxing bodies have already provided that permission, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. You know, if I could just say, I mean, and it's probably not the exact right place, but we have a lot of real estate downtown Wilkes-Barre with a similar format. We've got some high-rise there that are currently vacant, and I mean, it's a beautiful site, the presentation's really beautiful, but again, the economy is absolutely booming, you know, and I appreciate the Spinglers for wanting to invest in Plains. Most people think that's Wilkes-Barre, it's right next to the line there, off the, off the exit, but the economy is absolutely booming right now. You know, I looked, I was checking the Bureau of Labor, US Bureau of Labor Statistics, they just had the report a couple of days ago. Construction jobs are up a quarter of a million over this past year, and I, these LERTAs and these Koz's, I just have a hard time, in this type of climate especially, that we have people that want to build. We have, we have firms that want to develop without going back to the taxpayers and asking for, you know, a special abatement. And I know the process will work through, but, you know, the people just have this very unpopular stormwater fee. The average person's paying more taxes, they're paying more fees, and here we are, we're going to make a gift to more development where we have a surplus amount of real estate in the Wyoming Valley.
There's no guarantee of any change in the taxing situation till we go through the process.
I understand this, but I, I just really think the dialogue keeps on happening, but I think we keep on coming back to the same point, that firms are coming here, they're asking for the taxpayers to fund a lot of these programs and these developments, but that's, that's the risk of investing in development. It's, you, you delay your gratification, you make the investment with the hopes of recouping that money through the very high rents that you all saw in the packet that you looked at, at this program. It's a beautiful building. I think from what the presentation shows, it can stay on its own merit. I'll certainly give it a look with the hearing, but personally, Mr. Hagan, I'm just not a fan of these abatement programs. I don't think it's fair for the average person out there that is struggling to get by with brick and mortar, and we have a lot of surplus property. I don't think the, the ideal of LERTA meets this purpose. This was supposed to be more land reclamation, rehabilitating old, um, post-industrial lands, and this is going to be a wonderful resort should it come to pass. So again, just my two cents, Mr. Chairman, and I'll look to hear more, but I have a hard time supporting this, sir.
I prefer to respond to Mr. Hauss, if we get the opportunity to come back and make a full presentation, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, I feel the same way Harry does. I mean, there was an article on TV over the weekend about some thefts, I don't know, up in the Duryea, Avoca area, and it was Pride Mobility, a new building that they were building, and I don't remember them coming in here asking us for LERTA or for any type of tax abatement or anything, and you know, I don't think we should be in the business of picking and choosing who gets these tax advantages over, over somebody else. I mean, you either have the capital to do the job or you don't. And, you know, there's, there's only a few of us on here that are working, that I think represent the working class on this board, and the reality is, is that, Harry, you're right. I mean, the, the average citizen in this county making $40,000 a year in a family is not getting ahead, they keep on paying more and more, and that stormwater fee is, you know, is just a slap in the face for everybody, and, and you know, you go look at the $5 fee, it was $5 if you renewed your license plate in January for two years, now it's $5 for each year. It's right on, right on the bill that they send you anymore. Now, now, if you renew for two years, you're paying 10. I mean, so there it is, another slap in the face, a change that, I don't know who made it, but it's just more and more that we're being required to pay. People, people just can't keep up, and a few people in the area seem to benefit from all of this, and, and you know, I'm going to take a hard look at this, too, before I would give it, give it a go ahead.
And we have the same debate every time, and I get, I get the other view is, hey, we want development, we want jobs, we would like all this again, and I see that point, I know colleagues up here will say the same thing, but there's, there's not a need for it. We have vacant real estate right down the street in Wilkes-Barre. We have some high-rises there that are not at capacity, and I really think you are, you're picking winners and losers again. And, you know, it's, it's a form of corporate welfare. We have the same old argument, but I really hope we can really look and see where the economy is. The economy is booming in this, in this industry, and I just don't think they need the extra leg up. I think the taxpayers do.
Anyone else? Ms. Segman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a statement about, we just said, Harry, you talked about the very high rents. You know, I don't know if anybody else has been looking at apartments or condos around Wilkes-Barre. Their rents, the rents that they're posting here seem to be right in the same amount of money as they are in any of the Wilkes-Barre complexes, and it looks like they might be bigger in terms of square feet. So, you know, in terms of that issue, I think that they can't be criticized. The other issues we'll all have to look at, I think personally, I think that waterfront complex has a lot to be desired in that area to develop.
And I think the previous development, I don't think that received any abatement programs, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair. So the investors in that property, they did, just like Americans have always done in this land, they, they put the investment in, they waited for a few years on the return, and that's a wonderful property. It's a wonderful piece of real estate for Plains Township and for the area at large, and we've all, we've all been there at one time or the other. But again, it comes down to the same old argument, you know, is this truly fair for everybody else who's trying to make a go of it and not receiving any tax benefits? Just comes down to that.
Okay. This will be on the voting session for 26.
Thank you so much.
Attorney Nahaus? Attorney Moses, are you? Okay.
I'm here representing the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital and Higher Education Authority, which I serve as the solicitor for. I'm here for two potential agenda items for March 26th. The first is that, as you're aware, the Northeast Pennsylvania Hospital Education Authority serves as a conduit on bond deals for 501(c)(3)'s, if those projects involve higher education or health. King's College came to us with a project, I believe you guys have a resolution, did you receive the resolution that we forwarded? It is a project not to exceed $70 million. The proceeds of that debt to be issued will be used to finance improvements to King's College facilities, to provide funds to finance, refinance, and/or reimburse various other college revenue notes, and there are representatives from King's College that can speak to you more specifically about that project. We plan to have a TEFRA hearing here in council chambers on the morning of the 26th. Assuming that all things go smoothly at the TEFRA hearing, we would ask the council to consider the resolution regarding the health, safety, and welfare that evening. Would you like to hear from King's College?
Sure.
Kristin Finow from King's College is here to outline the project briefly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Basically, the majority of the borrowing.
Just repeat your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Kristin.
Just for the record and what your position is, so we have that correct.
Okay, it's Kristin Finow. I'm the Associate Vice President of Human Resources at the college, as well as interim Vice President of Business Affairs. The majority of the borrowing will be to refinance our existing debt, and then the remaining, some of that borrowing will cover the renovations, some of the renovations for the Times Leader Building.
So the Times Leader Building on North Bank Street?
That's correct. That's correct.
Is a question. Did you ever renovate the building on North Franklin Street, the water, water company building?
Which.
That's in the process now.
This, oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Any of that money going to go to refinance?
We're in the process of that. We're about 70% completed with the Spring Brook.
Okay. Is any of that money going to refinance, any money you borrowed on that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that project looks like it's moving along.
Yes, yes. We're about 70% finished with that, as well as the Memorial Church.
Any other questions from Ms. Finow?
Ms. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, Ms. Finow, welcome again to council. We, I love Kings, I'm so glad that Kings is here, and they add a lot of value to Wilkes-Barre and the whole area, and nice new sign there on North River Street, I just saw it on the way to council, they're really nice. So that being said, it's kind of the same argument with, with LERTA that we just had, that I understand the tremendous value Kings brings, we know that the council approves this, we're just a conduit, we're helping you get to your next stage, but I would really appreciate if Kings could help us out more also, just with, with county, county issues, you know, we fund the EMA, we fund emergency services, we have magistrate courts, we have the waterfront right there. We love the fact that Mr. Manley sits on the waterfront committee, and Kings is a part of that.
Riverside Parks.
Correct. We saw in the paper that Kings just added to the pilot to Wilkes-Barre this past year a little bit more, but that's really helpful. Could you take it back to your board directors, in, in good faith that we help Kings out every time, we've supported the projects in the past, could you help out Luzern County as well, offset some of our expenditures that clearly benefit Kings College, benefits the students, benefits the staff, and we're just looking for a perhaps warmer partnership because we're all in this together, and again, if you could consider that, I personally appreciate it, because we have this discussion every time Kings approaches council as well.
That's a fair ask.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say you can treat us the same way you treat the city of Wilkes-Barre, and maybe give us the same match right now that you're giving the city of Wilkes-Barre with the pilot, and you know, that would be a good start. Okay?
We love Kings.
I don't think she has quite that influence.
That smile should get any type of influence she wants.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're okay with that project, and Ms. Hauck?
I just have a question about the TEFRA hearing, and this goes back probably to 2012, 13, when we, we first started talking about having the TEFRA hearings where the public could come. Is there a possibility that you could have it in the afternoon, so that, like immediately proceeding our meeting, which I know we've done for other projects in the past? On the morning of the, of the council meeting, you're not going to get many members of the public there.
Okay. When I requested a time here, I, I believe in Sharon could verify this, I think we said any, if you could give us any hour on the 26th prior to the council meeting.
I think you spoke to Ms. Lawrence, right?
Yes. We would take any hour of the day before the council meeting, and I think that was the hour that we were given. We did not ask for the time slot.
No, it was open most of the day, but when I, I talked to Attorney Nahaus.
Right. I know in our email, we said any time from 9 to 5, so.
Is it possible that we could schedule it later in the day? He asked me last week.
Without our notice?
In order to put it in the paper.
We need 14-day advertisement period, and the advertisement went out.
Today.
But, I mean, we, we did not ask for that time slot.
Okay. In the future, we'll just try to make it a little bit later so that.
That's fine.
Hopefully, get a little better attendance.
Yeah, and that's actually more convenient for us because we have to come to the meeting anyway.
Yes, good. You want to go down to your next project?
Sure. So in order to facilitate the Kings College project, as we were doing the work on it, the Kings College project is amateurized over a 30-year period, which takes us from 2019 to 2049. The life of the authority was renewed in 1996 for 50 years. So the life of the authority only goes till 2046. So in essence, we can't do the Kings project, the Kings College project unless we extend the life of the authority. So the second resolution, we're here with you today, because the authority is currently existing until 2046 pursuant to the Articles of Amendment adopted on July 19, 96, we ask under the proposed Articles of Amendment that the life of the authority be extended for a period of 50 years from the date of the proposed articles, which would approximately be, if you approve the resolution on March 26th, they would probably be filed with the Commonwealth by like April 26th.
Yeah. And it'd be 50 years from that point in time.
It would be 50 years from that point, so it would take us to 2069.
So you can't do one without the other?
No, we couldn't.
Any questions on Attorney, for Attorney Moses in that regard?
Is that the only change? Is that the only change in the articles?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we expect this will be on the 26th voting session.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
My name is Ralph Sharp. I'm the Director for Hazleton Public Transit. We received our funding from PennDOT for our 2019, 20, 20-year in the amount of Our local match requirement to obtain that, those funds are $171,463. I'm here to ask Luzern County if they could help us out with our local match again this year. If you were so great, gracious to help us out, we got a lot of things going on this year, we're working with LCTA, we're starting some new routes that we're going to meet up with them to bring people from Wilkes-Barre down to Hazleton Industrial Park, and also take people from Hazleton up here to Wilkes-Barre to work in Nanticoke, in the industrial park. There's a lot of new plants coming up in Hazleton, and also, there's a lot of development here in the Wilkes-Barre area. So we are working with them to get something going. We've been talking quite a bit, a lot of meetings, met at Humboldt, talked to the association out there, and we're trying to get stuff going on. And also, our new maintenance and storage facility, we started in Hazleton by our airport, we started clearing, we're waiting for our 30% design to come through, and hopefully in the spring, we can break ground. And within this facility, we have accommodated room for LCTA to house their, some of their shared ride vans there, because I know they're somewhere in the city, I don't know exactly the location where they keep them, down the valley, I think, somewhere.
It's what we call the 40-foot airport, I think most of them reside there.
Right, so we did accommodate space in there because we have ours stored there, and if we can have, help out LCTA also, so they can keep some of their equipment there also.
Questions for Mr. Sharp, Mr. Urban?
Yeah. Last year, I called Commissioner Notstein down in Carbon County, asked him to arrange a meeting with you to see if Carbon was going to fund, and then I think Udichak supposedly talked to the minority commissioner down there, too. What?
That is correct. Numerous, there's been numerous emails and phone calls made since I was here last through Senator Udichak's office. I'm dealing with a Bill Richards that's out of that Carbon County office. We haven't had any luck with any replies at the present time. Now, I did speak with him on March 7th, and he is meeting with the commissioners down in Carbon County, so, on another matter.
Okay.
So he's going to try to talk with them to see if they can get me to come down and speak with them. Also, Schuylkill County, I've been, numerous calls and emails since I've been here last, and I did finally get a meeting scheduled for March 28th at 11 o'clock. I'm going down there. So we'll see how that goes. I, I do have the values, if, I broke them out again this year, what it would be. The values would be for Luzerne County, there would be, out of the 171, it would be 153,117. Carbon Counties would be $15,260, and Schuylkill County would be $3,086. So I have a letter written up again that, that I'm going to present to them when I meet up with them and discuss with them about helping us out towards our local match.
Yeah, when I spoke to Wayne, when I spoke to Wayne Notstein, Commissioner, he seemed to be agreeable that he would meet with you one-on-one.
I'm, I'm willing, but I haven't gotten any responses back.
Just call us off.
From, from, I've, I've called, and I did leave a message, but I, I get no, no replies.
The other question I have is, is that, how much money does the city of Hazleton, which is their transit authority, contribute to this fund?
Hazleton doesn't.
Contribute anything.
Contribute, and I don't think they have in, in the past, so that's.
Well, they haven't contributed, but this is the Hazleton Transit Authority.
Correct.
They service, they service Luzerne County, but it's actually a transit authority established by the city of Hazleton, but yet they don't contribute a dime to it. I think maybe you need to go back to Mayor Cassatt and ask him if he's willing to contribute to his own transit authority. Just my recommendation.
Ms. Hauck, you're next.
Yeah, I have a question on the PennDOT letter.
Yes.
It says that, as required in Act 44, you'll be expected to provide local funding of 171,000, an increase of 5% since you're not at the full 15% match. Would you explain that?
We're not, yeah, once we reach the 15%, 15% of our, our full operating grant, it caps at that point. Right now, we're, we're at about 8% of it. So until we reach the 15%, it will gradually go up every year.
And I believe that's the same with Luzerne County.
It's the same with all, all transit agencies in Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Hauss?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, Mr. Up, good to see you. Thanks for coming. What is the deadline for this match that's required by the, by the state?
The deadline, we have to have, usually I get the resolution, and I have it turned in before, by June 30.
By June 30.
Well, prior to June 30, so everything's in place in our COA program.
Because I, I think if, if we could postpone this until we get word back from the other two counties, I mean, it only amounts to about $18,000, but $18,000 is $18,000. That's how we balance the books here in Luzerne County. We gotta, we gotta pinch every penny. I, I think if we could even postpone this, Mr. Chair, with getting word from the other counties, I mean, it just makes common sense. Have Senator Yudichik be the, be the conduit that that works out as well. Steve, I think you brought up last year, it was a good idea. It was a good idea, now it's still a good idea.
And for Mayor Cassatt, to say he's not going to fund his own transit authority with a nickel?
Well, I mean, that part, I don't know, I mean, does Wilkes-Barre pay into the LCTA? I don't, I don't think Wilkes-Barre City does.
But that's, that's an LCTA that we appoint board members to. It's a county established LCTA.
That's our, that's our board. Hazleton has their own.
And we don't pay Wilkes-Barre Parking Authority, we don't pay any of their authorities that they have.
I would think in that discussion, we had very little success, I think, asking the other counties to participate, correct?
Correct.
And that's, I think we've been doing that about three years now?
Yes.
So that's an item that we'll talk about when we vote on it. Certainly, as you can see, the lion's share of the reimbursement would be from Luzerne County.